Roll call, everybody is here. Any additions to the agenda?
Done.
Okay. Adopt the agenda?
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Approve and correct the minutes from the September 12th, 2017 regular meeting and the September 18th special board meeting. They're in your packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Financial reports. August 2017 Treasury report. It's in your packet. Bob?
No, it's just running the way it's supposed to be running right now.
Are we behind budget already?
No, as a matter of fact, when we did our audit, we're a little ahead of budget, so...
Good.
At least the tentative audit, anyway.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Audit approval of the bills. We have the additional August 2017 bills and then the September 2017 bills. Cheryl, I'm sure you had the opportunity to review them?
Yes, I did. Like Bob said, it's pretty much business as usual. We had payments for some more Chromebooks, some textbooks, reconditioning of books. Just pretty much normal stuff. We got some new smart boards and carts. And I think the final payment on the elementary windows?
No, we have one more they hold.
There is one more.
I think there's 5% that they hold back, so they'll do a punch list, go through the elementary, and then if everything's fine, they have to get us some paperwork and stuff. So, but the last big payment was given, yep.
Those were the things that jumped out. I would recommend that we pay the bills.
Okay. So, and just with the reiterate on the smart boards, were there any other, because we were talking about some other big screen things?
Yeah, well, a number of teachers are looking at different versions, and it was discussed a little bit at the technology committee. Some are moving away from smart boards and going more to multiple screens in the room, of which they can tie into their Chromebooks. Some are still using the smart boards. Most of the smart boards and those types of things are paid for out of the budget that we give each school, both the elementary and the secondary, out of the technology.
So, that's what this was, for just for the smart boards? Okay.
Yep. There's one room, we did set one room up in the elementary school to start working with their teachers, and we set one room up here at the secondary too. So, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and check to see if that specific was that set up or not. But the smart boards, those have been paid for out of the regular budget.
Okay. Got a motion from Cheryl?
I'll second it.
Second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Consent agenda. Looks like we have seven different items underneath the consent agenda. I'm going to kind of read briefly through some of them. One is review and consider approval of adding in a 1.5 hours per week to Jenny Omsheid, paraprofessional effective September 27th, 2017. Another one is review and consider of hiring Amy Spanier, ECFE Session 1 Teacher Assistant for approximately 14 hours starting September 25th. Review and consider hiring Abigail Lorenz, ECFE Session 1 Child Education for approximately... Is it P-18? Is that...
18.
18 hours.
Oh, just 18 hours? Okay. Starting September 27th. Number four is review and consider approval of the following non-athletic assignments for 2018, '17 and '18. Halftime for the National Honors is Dominic Platto and Kelly Whaler.
And they'll just split the stipend that's set for them.
Review and consider approval and accepting resignation from Nancy Holseth, duplicator effective September 22nd, 2017. And then review and consider accepting a donation for $250 from Dombrowski's Agency. And then review and consider approval of the following teacher lane changes request. And there's numerous ones underneath there, and it's basically following the teacher's master agreement. So, those are the ones that are all on the consent agenda.
Any questions on any of those items?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda. I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Business. We have three items underneath business. Anybody in the audience that has any questions regarding the business? We do stop and ask questions, or answer questions if we can, from the audience. So, the first one is review and consider approval of the proposed 2017 payable 2018 levy limits certification report and set a truth and taxation meeting for December 5th, 2017 at 6:00 PM.
And that's a comparable date to last year, so Steve Pumper will come out and do the truth and taxation. The levy, remember, this is the first piece of that, this is not certifying it. We do levy to the max in all of our areas except for QComp. QComp, we do not levy to the max, and I think the new one that we gave you illustrates no QComp on there. So, we get QComp dollars two ways. One is from the state and one is from local levy. We've chosen not to do the local levy, so we just, so we're really under levy for the QComp piece because we don't take the local piece of it. It's gone, our levy has gone up in some ways and down in some ways with the new tenure facility piece. We'll get more money, there will be more levy. Just a reminder to the state that for the 10-year plan, and those dollars, it's equalized. So, the state pays some, our local people say some. If we were going to get rid of any levy, that would not be the one I would do because we get part of it from the state. All right? And then also, we are going to lease levy for the West Central Ed buildings that we rent. We pay rent for that, and we're going to lease, and that's new. We have not done that in the past. We weren't sure we could do it, but we're able to do that. We're going to lease levy just like we do for the gymnastics area that we do that. It's not a big amount, but it is an amount that we can do, and we're looking at doing some different things with West Central Ed, so I think that'll come out as we move a little bit further down the road on where we're going to have those pieces. But that's still a lot of discussion that takes place. Lou's been part of a little bit of that as the committee, but as we get more information and it'll certainly come back to the board before anything is done or changed. So, at this point, it's just a matter of, I don't think they have to approve that one. That's right, you have to approve the December 5th piece. Yeah, they're down the report. So, it's the proposed levy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So, I got a motion from Lou and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Review and consider approval of a salary increase for Josh Thornston, school nurse.
It's, we're going to, I'm recommending that we go up a dollar, the, if everything else has gone up, that's going to be his raise. He is, he doesn't have all of the certification he needs, but it meets our requirement because we're a smaller school. If he was a bigger school, he would have different requirements he would have to make, but he does fit everything that we need to do. He didn't get a raise the first time. I think this is a year, about a year and a half since he's gotten anything new. So, I'm going to recommend that we do that. He's done a good job for us.
Is this here something that we should put on, like anybody else, like administrators or, I know sometimes we can put this on like the teacher's contract or...
Well, in the past, when our nurse has had all of the required pieces, they've been on the teacher's contract. It's not a required thing.
Right.
As long as he doesn't have everything that he needs, he's still qualified to do it because of our small school status. Once he gets those, then you'll probably see the recommendation to move it to the teacher's contract, and then after that, we just follow the teacher's contract. That's the way it's done in the past. Now, the board wouldn't have to do that, but that's kind of the way that it's been done. But we've never had a school nurse on that piece unless they've been completely, have all of the qualifications that they need.
Okay.
And I would not recommend to the board that until he gets that, that we put him on the teacher's contract.
Right.
Well, right now, there's, like I said, he's certainly qualified to do what he is. There's no waiver or anything else that we're doing with him.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Number three, review and consider selecting organization to help the board with selection of the process of hiring the superintendent effective July 1st, 2018. So, we had several options a couple weeks ago at one of our meetings to talk about, so kind of open up for discussion. So, whoever wants to jump in, start, can go ahead and start. We have one from Greg.
If I may to...
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, we had a proposal from MSBA. That was one proposal that was discussed, and just a reminder at the special board meeting, you've talked about much of this, but because we don't make decisions at special board meetings, we moved it to this, so it's just open to discussion, although some has taken place. School Exec Connect has, was also put in a piece, and Peer Solutions, which that is Mr. Vondell. So, those were the three companies that we discussed that evening.
When I look at it and take a couple of things, the school board association, each time they come up here, they're going to drive a ton of miles, which is all chargeable to us. And I looked at some of the additional costs that we could incur and just didn't think personally that was the one. Looked at the other one, that was that national organization. And there, all the stuff that I looked at on them, it was a lot bigger schools. I'm not sure that we will get what we're looking for when we have an organization that's dealing with schools two times the size of us. And then Greg Vondell, we have to kind of careful because he was here last time, I thought he did a great job. I was on the Citizens Committee at that time, but he did his presentation, his costs were right in line, he's closer, so we don't have a whole bunch of anything extracurricular come in. One of the others also had some open-ended advertising and some of those kind of things, which I didn't see with, what's the name of it, Peer or something?
Peer Solutions.
Peer Solutions. So, I don't know, I happened to like the Peer Solutions. I thought they did a good job last time. We have the same individuals, they know our school, they deal with schools around here, and everybody gets involved. I liked it when they had staff part of it, public part, and school board part. And I'd say we made a good selection last time.
I suppose that would depend on who you talk to.
I would echo what Bruce has to say. I just felt like we had success last time, they know who we are. I don't know why we would try somebody else. I hope they wouldn't give us the best service.
Well, I agree, both Rick and Bruce. We had very good luck with Greg, and he's from a small area, small schools, he knows all the schools around, he's been a superintendent for years, and I would agree, I'd select him.
I agree too, the experience that he has working with the size of our school and the first go around, I think we were all very satisfied with how we did things, so I guess I would echo the same, say agree.
I concur. I was not involved at all in the search last time, but looking through the proposals from all three, I agree too that two of them were more geared to hire larger schools, larger enrollments, larger areas. And Greg looked like he put together a very personalized, very easy to deal with proposal. I felt comfortable with Peer Solutions also.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like pretty much everybody is on board with going with Peer Solutions. Again, I was on the board too, you know, at the time, and just for the sake of the audience and some of the staff that are here, I couldn't have asked for anybody more knowledgeable, especially about candidates that are in this area, because with being a superintendent himself and being a professional, in his professional wheelhouse, as you would say, he knows a lot of candidates that are not even necessarily that are superintendents, but are maybe potential superintendents, that are principals, that are got their superintendent licensure. And he is a good reference for them and also for the school districts that he's representing. So, I think, as you guys all do, that I think that would be a great fit for us, especially, you know, going into it with, a lot of the staff know Greg too, because he was here before, or six, seven years ago. So, with the comfort level of that in itself, I think they would be more apt to say things to somebody that they know more personable, or even more are recognized than somebody that's a stranger. So, I think all in all, that it would be a great, a great fit for our community and our staff and us to go through. So...
Not much more to say, I agree.
I would say somebody should have a motion.
I would make a motion that we would contract with Peer Solutions.
Second that.
So, I got a motion from Rick and a second from Bruce. Anybody in the audience have anything to say about it? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried.
Would the board be fine with me contacting the individuals, letting the other groups know that we went with, you decided to go with Peer Solutions, and then letting Peer Solutions know that they should move forward with this, and possibly me just be in the conduit at least until we get started to make sure that you get the information you need, and we set up the meetings that we need to set up in order to move forward?
Sounds good.
Yeah. Because he would, would he probably come out one more time and just lay out something and then ask for...
I think he'll put some things together and then, I'll talk with Greg and find out. He may set up a meeting to set the timelines and all of the stuff that goes with that. So, the next piece will be putting things on calendars to put the timeline in place so that you can get everything done to a certain degree. Everything's done before, you know, when you advertise and you get it out, and then you start the interviewing process. So, I'm sure that he'll either come out or put something together that will meet the board's needs, but I'm, my guess would be he'll come out at least to talk about the complete process that he'll put in place, and then what he's going to do at what time of that process. So, we'll get that out to the board, and I'll talk with Greg tomorrow.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Nothing underneath personnel. Informational reports.
Yeah, and I was a little worried Laurie was at the same track meet I was at, and she said she would try to make it, but when I left, they lost a, somebody was recording things, so she may still come in by then, but well, it's wait and see.
Then I'll vote to Robert Hewitt, administrator report.
Yep, just a few things, and I'll probably cover some of the things that Laurie would have covered. I certainly want to just thank everyone who attended the gala this last Saturday. I can't say enough about it, the people who attended, the sponsors, the ones that donated money. Right now, the unofficial amount is about $75,000 that we'll bring into for our vocational training piece. Now, they'll all look through things, and that will change, so don't hold me to the exact piece, but, and I also, and I wrote an article that we put in the paper just thanking people for this, but I also want to really thank the Area Community Foundation itself for the willingness to partner with us, because they put in an immense amount of work, and I'll certainly, from my perspective, send a thank you to that main committee that put things together, but their willingness to partner with us, and they did put a tremendous amount of work in to set up that gala. They also raised another about $600,000 towards an endowment that I think will be used to continue to support the school and the community into the future, with one possibility of, possibly helping us hire more staff in that vocational area. So, I just can't say enough about everyone, the community in general, and like I said, I put a little thank you in the paper that you guys can read on Wednesday. Our editor was nice enough to be able to put...
I'm pretty sure it's in. I think it's in.
Because we're supposed to get those articles in on, I think Thursday the deadline is, and I got the article to him on Monday, so we're grateful to the paper for doing that also. I did send you an email, information on the solar garden grand opening, and certainly if you want to attend, do attend. It'll be interesting. If you go by St. Joe, that's where one of our solar gardens is at. They're getting our information right now to determine how much exactly we need of the power, but that should be up and running in October here, so we're excited about that. If Laurie's here, she'd tell you it's homecoming week, so a lot of activities going on in the schools. Been a great start, I think, to the school year so far. If you got rid of the hot weather, I would prefer it to be cooler all the way through. Just a reminder to the board that we have the MSBA Leadership Conference, that's on January 11th and 12th. That's the, usually we stay over Wednesday night and Thursday night and then come back on Friday. If you could, put that down, I'd like to, as soon as it comes available to us, I'd like to get the hotels set up, so you'll get an email from me on that. Robotics, just a few informational pieces for that. We'd really like to get that going. You know, that's one of the things that we do want to use the gala dollars for, is to start setting up robotics teams. We're looking at the high school first, but we really want to push this a little further ahead, and I don't want the board to think. We'll be setting up an activities meeting, whoever's on the activities, to have some discussion. We're also going to bring together Schedule C, those are the group that we kind of revamped the whole Schedule CPs to look on where we would put this. Certainly, we talked to MPa to make sure they're okay, because we want to put that in the contract in future years, so whether we have to do a memorandum and stuff. But the one piece that we would really like to do, that's a little ahead of more than we would, normally we take the process, but the robotics team we need to get going. There's certain things that are already taking place, and we've started that with Laurie has just kind of volunteered to advise them until we get this in place. We'd really like to put out a posting to hire, we won't hire anybody until we get further down the road, but we don't want to have to wait a couple weeks or whatever to, once we're set up, to get going on it. So, the board should just be aware that we're going to kind of, with your permission, we're going to kind of move ahead with that and post it, so that we can get that piece done as we get the rest of the pieces done. We really think that at least for this year, we'll look more for the, just to get the high school one going well, and start the discussion on how we want to do middle school and an elementary. There's some options for us to look at, we want to get it, make sure that it's done right. So, it'll probably be something that, at least for the elementary, middle school, we won't look at implementing this year, but we will look at implementing the next year. I'd rather, like I said, we, there were a group of high school kids who took the incentive to go to some camps, so they're kind of already ahead of everything. We'd like to kind of set things up so that our elementary and our middle school could do the same thing before we start it. But we'll keep the board informed about that and the gala committee, because we're going to work with them on coming up with appropriate use for those dollars. They'll be informed about that all the way along. You know, if something happens where we think we can move faster with those other, the middle school or the elementary, then we'll bring that to the board, but I would prefer to make sure we do it right the first time and not rush into it just to get it going and then find out there was a better way for us to do it. So, I would prefer to take the time with that, and it's going to take a little bit of time to sort out the dollars anyway. Okay. Any questions on those pieces? At least the robotics, for sure. And like I said, we're going to be working with the gala committee, and we're going to, as we look at using the dollars that they've got, we'll bring business people in, people are familiar with vocational things, so that we look at getting the right equipment and doing things right. So, we're working with our teachers now, we're talking with administrators, we're going to go, hopefully, look at some of the site visits as part of the facility plan. Also, is to look at some places that have upgraded programs, so this kind of all fits in. So, we're not going to be in a rush to do things, like I said, we want to, we don't want to purchase things we don't need, and we, you know, we want to stretch the envelope out to get things that will really help our program, and we want to get a lot of input before we do that. And roof, I would like a couple of board members who might be interested in discussing roofs. I know that the hospital did a different thing, and we're going to do at least a $300,000 project this next summer. What worries me is that it is a new product, it's kind of a roll-on roof, and I'd like a couple board members to be involved with that, to get their input, to look at that. So, if you're interested, just let me know, unless you want to pick a couple people right now. Bruce, you're interested?
Sure. I'd be interested.
Okay, Lou, if you two, then I'll kind of keep you in touch, and we'll certainly inform the board as we do this. I'm just, we're getting a lot of information on this new way to do the roofing, but we were trying to find companies and all that have done it, that has been a wrong for a long time. Because even on our roofs that are usually warranted for 20 years, they last considerably longer than that. And if the new product is warranted for 15 years, and there's no kind of stretching that out, then it may not be as a good deal for us. So, we have a lot of checking into that at the same time. It's an interesting concept, because I think when you redo it, it would be much cheaper. So, there's a lot of things that we're looking at, and we may bring people out to present to the board when that time's coming. It will be a tight timeline. We really need to get the whole piece kind of set up on what we're going to do by the end of October, so that we, because it's not that the tight, snow will hit. And once we get snow, they can't go up on the roof and have people look at the particular things that we need to get done, and we want to get that done right away when spring hits at the end of the school year. We had a technology committee meeting, we talked about elementary iPads, we need to get some of those. I think if we get the funds, we'll purchase them all with the heat. Right now, I think that that's where we'll go. There were a number of iPads that they needed, I wanted to kind of wait to see how things shook out, but I would like to get those to the elementary school. We talked about the Chromebook rollout, there's been some touchscreen issues that were being resolved. Let's see what else. We're checking on hotspots for possible put on our buses, at least for our long routes that we take, but we have ways to get the information for that before we go any further than that. We've got five interns right now that are working with Eric on things, so we're excited about that. Overall, I would say, from what I've seen, the rollout has been very good. We've had some issues, but nothing that we haven't been able to take care of right away, and I think it's been a good start. When I've checked in with kids in the hallways, it's been a good thing from their perspective. So, I think we're excited, we're going to need more. Tell you the truth, the one thing that I've really been impressed with is our staff on this. You know, this is a big change for a lot of people, and I've just been impressed with the way the staff have embraced it and are working hard for it, and I can't say enough how, how well that they've really taken this on. And it's, in a lot of ways, I think it's really good for them, but it's additional work, it's additional learning. So, I can't say enough about the staff in regards to that. That's all I have at this time.
All right.
Unless the board has some questions for me.
No?
No question, but I think we owe you a thank you for the gala and all the work that you put in, and I don't know who else in the school district, but I just want to thank you and...
Well, it's, you know, my article talks about the same, the thing I've always said, is strong community, strong school, strong school, strong community, and I think the gala really exemplified what that means, about how we work together to accomplish a common goal. The community thought this was important, and they supported it. And I just, I just can't say enough about all... And I just, I just can't say enough about all the people that followed through with a lot of things that needed to take place for that gala.
But it, but it was like Rick was saying, that it was still more on top of what you guys do, so, I mean, I think.
It, it's been one of the few times in my career, I think I've been absolutely speechless. I know that when they said the amount, I looked at Mark, cause he was sitting at the same table I was at and I, I didn't know what's saying, I really thought they were gonna split that, that that was part, that part of that was gonna go into the endowment. I had no idea that the endowment was kind of a separate piece and then to have people donate the kind of money that they donated to that, to raise it up to 600,000 was just amazing. I, I just, I would have, in my wildest dreams, I would have never guessed that it was gonna shake out the way it did. So we, we have a, a really good problem of how to upgrade things and make sure that we do it right. Uh, part of the problem, as I mentioned, is that we need to tie this into any discussion of facility. You know, so that will kind of come up as this all shakes out and, and if the board decides to go for a project or not go for a project and, like I said, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to be able to upgrade in, in that area. So we're excited to be able to do it. Thank you goes out to, to the foundation and the community for that and our staff because our, our staff strongly supported this also.
Yeah. And I'll just, a, a side note, when I was, uh, I got the opportunity to go with my daughter to this, to the gala, cause my wife was busy doing something else and, well, she graduated last year and she, for a young person to come back and say that when this was all happening, she said, "Dad, I just got goosebumps all over my body," she said. She said, "Is this really what it's all about to be community oriented and stuff like that?" So the impression that that even put, instilled on her is life, a lifelong learning thing and it's, so it's a commemorative to everybody that was part of that, it's just, you know, that little thing, just how much that might impact what she does, you know, in her life. And, and even for the kids that are listening and hearing what's going on with the gala and, and what is the school gonna get from it, I'm sure there's a lot of kids out there in the awe, like, "Oh my God, you mean there's people in our community that's gonna give us that kind of money for these things?" So, it's, it's precious.
And I mentioned to a, a few board members when I talked to them at that event, regardless of the dollars, and I can't say, I, I won't say that it's not nice to have those dollars to be able to re, remodel and upgrade in some of our areas. But that's so true about the community and everybody getting together and what an event that was. And before I forget, I also want to thank all our people who participated in the entertainment. And, and, and Matt for putting together those, those videos. You know, he really did a good job. So I, I just can't say enough. It's just fantastic.
Thank you. Any other board sharing?
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy, any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign and carried.